Ready, everybody ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I hope not.
We'll now call this workshop, special workshop meeting to a room. And we have an agenda, proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. And I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda plus the two consent items that are included.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say if I may say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that brings us to item one, which is, I mean, FY20 budget discussions. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Woodland at this time to continue with that.
Mayor members of council, we appreciate you joining in the special meeting tonight to work on the budget. What we would like to do this evening is to move as far through the department budgets as possible. As you'll recall, last week we began and there were some budget notes. Glenn has done a good job of giving us a quick overview. Relative to the bond covenants, you had asked what the ratios are. As you can see, the first rate covenant has to do with net revenues. That we must have 20% of the surplus account unrestricted assets. And we must cover 120% of the debt service bonds and 100% of the other debt service. Now to explain to you what that actually means, here's Gary.
Well, we actually take the revenue less the operating expenses and add 20% of the fund balance. And that must equal 120% of the debt service on the revenue bonds. And we must also cover the others 100%.
Any other comments? We're good? Okay. Now, there's a second rate covenant, please.
And that just means we have to be able to cover our bond payments.
How's that different from the first one then?
The first one, we have, we must have enough fund balance to cover 20% of the debt service on the bonds that we left over.
You had also asked, a good presentation from the chief of the opioid abuse grant, we provided that to you. We won't take time to go through that unless there are other questions. If you have, the one thing though, as you notice in the note, you had requested that we restrict the casework to people who live inside the city. We're not quite able to do that, but we have restricted it so that it is personnel who live in the city or their personnel who are directly involved with the city police department. The goal there would be that the money from the grant would be used, would be used to assist people who our police department deals with on a regular basis, not others who may be coming in from Carteret County or another location that occasionally the city police department deals with. The note regarding House Bill 474, we gave you a description of that. Again, the chief is monitoring that and we will keep you posted as to whether that's good, whether that House bill gets approved. On the Black Creek withdrawal, I was incorrect in stating that we had not already gone to the final withdrawal. What we, as you can see, we actually are now to the maximum limit. What we hope will happen through the studies is that we will get relief from that maximum limit. And we do believe that the studies are going to show that. As Wally Hanson has said to you before, one of the things that we have to do is to document well depth. And they're hiring a consultant now. Hopefully by the end of the summer, that report will be in showing the depth of the wells. And with that, hopefully we will get approval to actually increase our withdrawal again. Another note you ask about was NC DOT relocation projects. As you will recall, in the rate model, there was the assumptions that had been built in regarding what the city would have to spend. Wally and Anthony did a great job of putting together this slide that shows you how many of these projects have substantially been reduced, especially if you look at the one on the SR2, I'm sorry, US 258 Super Street, going from almost $3 million down to 330. And then, of course, you can see the other ones, there is substantial savings on the part of the city. If the bill, which the mayor and council have asked Senator Brown, Representative Cleveland and Shepherd to support relative to a change in the matching for DOT projects, if that is approved, some of these projects will come down even further. But that's not represented here. You also ask about the capital reserve. As we began FY19, you had $872,000 in the capital reserve, four cent reserve. Remember, the four cent produces roughly 1.4 million a year. There is debt service. We do have a little bit of interest. You can see how the national economy has recovered because on that type of fund balance to be able to generate a whopping $13,800 shows you that you're in probably 1% or less territory. The 800 megahertz, if you fund that out of the four cent and you fund all of the capital projects that are in the budget, that doesn't mean the ones I'm recommending, then you would actually end the year in FY20 with 731,000 in your fund balance versus the current 872,000. Now, on May the 7th, Wally is going to give you a good overview of the, all of the capital projects. But this, this chart shows that if you are to fund the 800 megahertz and all of the projects that the staff recommended out of the four cent fund, then you will have roughly $731,000 in the reserve. It's not a bad position to be in. It just means that when you look at projects such as Jackham Yet or other major projects where you don't know what the project cost is going to be, one of our goals was to build this reserve up to several million dollars so we avoid future borrowing. I would also remind you that these are the projects that are, are not recommended and there's actually an error here. I did not realize that on the Georgetown bathrooms, that while community development block grant money can be used to build the bathrooms, they cannot be used to hire the architect to actually finish the design. As you will recall, we use the same bathroom design at now the fourth time. If you've been by Jackham Yet or over the weekend, you may have seen the pictures, we're using the same basic plan. Each time there are minor modifications, each time there's some fill fitting relative to engineering. So in this particular case, I had told you originally I did not recommend the 10,000. If we're going to build the Georgetown bathrooms out of CDVG, then that 10,000 will have to come and certainly that doesn't break the bank. The major projects that we'd be delaying, of course, would be the Commons Playground, the Brook Valley, and then, of course, the Commons Splash Pad. Those are decisions that you can make as we get into the CIP. Obviously, you can make those decisions anytime you'd like to. Recommended vehicle wash facility. Now, for $9,000, you're not going to get the wash facility. What you're going to get is some design work that will help us determine how and where would we put the vehicle wash facility. The current facility at Public Works has drainage issues. It is an open bay. It works fairly well, but it is a manual system where literally a vendor has to get up on a lift with a power washer and simply washes the vehicles. That works. What we hope to do is to go to a much more modern system, but in order to do anything, we're going to have to figure out the drainage issues because the current piping that discharges from that system that's there today is inadequate.
So Richard, you currently use a contractor?
Yes, sir.
To do all the washing? And this would replace a contractor?
That is correct.
We're just running through the system.
Hopefully, we can, can come up with a system that you basically drive through like you would a modern car wash. Currently, the contractor provides car washing or vehicle washing for our commercial and residential fleet and for all of the transit buses. Individual vehicles such as a police car or fire truck, they are not washed by the vendor. They are washed in a different way, most of the time by hand, by loving care at someone's house. Wax on, wax off. The actual cost of that facility is probably going to be close to a half a million dollars. But that's not what's here. This 9,000 is to come up with the conceptual study. Fire Station 3, we know that Fire Station 3 has some electrical issues. It is an older facility. This 50,000 is to really study the feasibility of rebuilding, I'm sorry, rehabbing the current or should we be relocating it? Now, the relocation study will be done by our own staff. You have seen their excellent work when they looked at Fire Station 2 moving from Barn Street up to Gum Branch. But this would be the conceptual work to really analyze Fire Station 3 and say, is it a good investment to try to rehab and expand that? Or, and I will repeat again, Mr. Bittner mentioned to us before the need to have some type of a recreation facility in Bryn Mawr. If you were in the future to decide to move and build a new station, it's possible you may decide that you want to retrofit Fire Station 3 and turn it into some type of community center for the Bryn Mawr area. All of those decisions though are still at least a year away, but we do need the money. Barn Street, 23,000. Now, that's not the cost. You'll recall in your current FY19 budget, you have 177,000. The lowest bid that we received was right at $200,000. We rejected those bids. We hope that when we send it back out to bids, that the impact of the hurricane will be behind us and that we're going to get very competitive bids. But at this point, to move forward with Barn Street, we are thinking we're going to need a little bit more money. Certain City Boardwalk in FY19, you put in 15,000 and agreed that every year, because the boardwalks down there are really beginning to have some deterioration. So Alan Baker and his people have been looking at that. Obviously, they have not been able to address the boardwalk because they have at least one of the building or location that they have been having to address due to the hurricane. Rails to Trails, $100,000. That is a match. What this would do, the project, as you will see when you go through the CIP, this is a project that would basically finish the Rails to Trails. Now, what does that mean? When you get down next to the middle school, you know, down here across from the new IMCA building, the trail stops and you have about five or six blocks where you find your own way. So the concept that Anthony and others have been working on is to find a connection that would go from there all the way down to the boardwalk system. There will be DOT money that will match it, but it is an 80-20, is that correct Anthony? An 80-20 program. We estimate that the city would have to put in about $100,000. Now, you would only do this project if you do get confirmation of the grant from the DOT. Now, ADA Phase 1, we've mentioned before that Carmen and many of your other staff people, Danny Bryant, obviously Alan Baker and many others, Anthony and his staff, they did a great job coming up with our ADA plan. We need to begin to make some physical financial investments to implement that plan. One of those would be to begin to work on a lot of your parking lots because remember, this is capital reserve. You'll also recall that in the budget, there is money to go to the, what's the system where you?
Close captioning.
Close captioning. Thank you very much. The proposed schedule for this evening, we would like to go through as many of the department budgets as we possibly can. I do know that at least one member needs to leave about quarter till seven. So what I'd like to do, if it's acceptable to council, is to begin to go through the department budgets. Any questions on what you've seen so far? Fire and Emergency Services, these are the gross numbers and the question is, why did their budget go down $200,000? Well, two reasons. In 2014, we bought a ladder truck. About three, four years, you're being looking buying a new ladder truck. So the debt service for the ladder truck has now come off and also we're not buying as much equipment or other parts in the fire department. Most of their other expenses have been holding the line, but the 200,000 reduction is because of those two things, debt service and equipment. If you look at building inspections, a little bit of a decrease. One thing that we would point out is that the revenues there are actually projected to be up. Building is beginning to come back. We are seeing new subdivisions being planned. So in the FY19 budget, we only estimated $475,000 to cover the $556,000. So the general fund subsidized it. In fairness, because of the hurricane, they did a lot of work this year without charging a fee. And we'd all agree that was the right thing to do. But we do believe that building is going to start back on single family homes. So we're projecting the revenue this year at $530,000 versus the FY19 of 475. If we are fortunate to get the 530, then you can see that you will generally cover that budget with the fees. And I'll remind you, the state law says that all fees collected for building inspections must stay with that department. You can't, you can buy vehicles for the inspectors, you can pay their salaries, but you couldn't take that money and pay the sidewalk or something like that. Code enforcement is up because of vehicle purchases. I would also say to you that we are looking at at least two larger commercial buildings this year that do not qualify for CDVG demolition assistance. One of those is there at Anzlo behind the McDonald's. One of those is out near the Ford dealer. And so every year, we budget about $30,000 to help cover the cost. Remember, we tear those buildings down with city crews. The asbestos removal must come from the property owner, but the cost that we actually incur in real dollars is in the disposal of the material. So that budget is up to address those two things. Public Works Administration, almost no change. Public Works Engineering, almost no change. Public Works Maintenance, again, if you look at Public Works Maintenance. Powell Bill, I remind you that Powell Bill comes in two budgets. We get about $1.7 million in revenue. We think that number will stay steady. I will remind you that as long as the city is not growing, over time, our numbers will come down. So if we are fortunate to get one or two new subdivisions in the next year or two, we'll increase our lane miles. That won't give us a lot more money, but at least it's a step in the right direction. The FY20 revenue in Powell Bill, you will recall that we had to make reimbursements for the installation of the traffic management system. The good news is that in FY19, you made your last payment. And again, I would like to commend Anthony and Gail and others, John included, for the negotiations that they did for, was it four years ago or five?
It was four years ago.
Four years ago. That allowed us to make that $2 million payment over a period of years versus having to make it in one year. But the good news is that your Powell Bill money will not be directed towards that payment in FY20. That'll give us a little bit more money for paving. When you see the streets non-Powell Bill moved around, this is a function of the same number of people in both departments, but based upon work, some years, they do a little bit more Powell Bill work, some years, they do a little bit more non-Powell Bill. So moving these numbers around for non-Powell Bill, you really have to look at both budgets together. And in the streets non-Powell Bill, we do have, we do have some equipment that we will be buying. So that's the primary reason why that is up. Traffic signal control, that's one that went down substantially because of what we talked about just a minute ago. That's your last payment on the IT system. Any questions on those? Recreation, you can see that they've held the line very nicely. And that's actually pretty amazing when you consider how many employees they have that are covered by health insurance increases and also by the retirement fund. I'd remind everybody that Friday, Saturday and Sunday of this week, we have the Jacksonville Jamboree. This past weekend, we had a major girls' basketball tournament, which was part of that. We have the men's or boys' softball, I think it's men's softball and boys' basketball starting Friday afternoon late. And then the festivities at the Commons, where everything is free except food, will begin at? 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock? 10 a.m. Saturday morning. And Mr. Bittner has promised that he is not going to allow it to rain on his side of town. So hopefully, we'll have a great turnout. We did break the Recreation and Parks budget for the first year into two different departments. While they've been two different departments for a number of years, their budgets were combined. This year, they've been broken into separate budgets and that will be the track for the future. This is the issue of $100,000 increase, which is relative to purchase of equipment. So, you know, they have their mowers, put on a lot of hours. While we're talking about Recreation and Parks, I had a meeting today with Susan and Michael. We are having a very difficult time finding people through the temp agencies. I know many of you have tried to hire people. Unemployment in Jacksonville is substantially tight or substantially down. Employment is very, very tight. So if you don't see medians cut quite as often, it's primarily because we're set up with a 15 to 16 person rotation. We currently have nine. We also have two of our full-time employees who are out due to injuries. So bear with us. What I'm also going to say to you is, we may be coming back to you and saying, as you know, last year, you approved what we're going to call temporary employees hired through the city versus temporary employees hired through the temp agencies. We believe that if we take on more of the temporary employees through the city because we will pay them more than the temp agencies, that we can begin to fill these positions. At the end of the day, it won't cost you any more money. It's just transferring money. We're not asking to do that tonight, but we're saying to you, we are really scrambling right now for temporary labors. Transfers, Gail, please.
That four and a half million dollars represents the 1.4 million that we transferred to the Capital Reserve, the 1.6 million to solid waste, almost 900,000 that we transferred to the street improvement capital project, and then about $700,000 in grant match money.
And we can get you all the details on the transfer if you'd like more details on Water and Sewer Fund, charges for services, you can see they are up. Other revenue is, is also up. Borrowing, so Gail, please.
The other revenue that's increased is actually an increase in what we're anticipating in investment earnings. It has, we have seen a little bit of an increase. It's nothing to write home about, but a little bit of increase. The borrowing is directly related to the capital LA. If they're buying more, we're borrowing more. If they're buying less, we're borrowing less. The transfer is actually the system development fees. We have to put those in a capital reserve fund. So we put them in the capital reserve and transfer them back to pay the debt service on the projects that are financed by that. And then the appropriate balance is just to plug the hole.
And the plug, the hole you're plugging is primarily capital projects and equipment. It has nothing to do really with daily operations.
Exactly.
So, any questions on this one? Water and Sewer unrestricted and the percent versus next year's budget. You can see this number is, is substantial. I'll remind you, one of our goals is to try to, when we build what we call the Northwest Passage or whatever the correct name of that is, we hope to be able to pay for as much of that upfront and then issue bond debt to get some of that back. But Gail, do you want to review anything there?
No, as you can see, we're anticipating spending a little bit of the money in FY19, but we're still staying pretty steady. And that's always good when we go to the bond market, they look favorably upon that. There are a lot of things that are not in our favor in this one. Gets us a better reading.
One of the good news out of the tax changes is we may be able to, to avoid some of the long-term borrowing through the normal revenue bond process. And in the future, well, why don't we do this? Let's make that a budget note where you explain to council what you think is going to be happening. Would you like to give them an overview real quickly?
Well, I saw some proposed legislation from the federal government. You can borrow- You can borrow from a bank up to $10 million without going through the whole issuing the statement and all the attorney fees and all that. And there's a proposal to move that up to 30 million, which would be great. Would save us some money on the borrowing.
Even if the rate was a little higher, this is something upfront, upfront cost of handling the bonds and then the time involved by going through the council government.
And you don't have the people who manage the bondholders. There's only one. It would be the bank.
So you mean that with actually a lower APR, actually, you know, net effect on us?
But I don't know if that will pass or not, but I've seen some.
What are the usual administrative expenses for borrowing?
We have...
Percentage-wise?
It's, I don't know what percentage is. It's pretty hefty when you get a bond attorney for us and an attorney for the underwriter, and then you have to pay, it's UDTC, I think is the company that manages the bonds and the bondholders and notifications to them. And then you got an escrow agent, you got, it adds up pretty quickly.
We can show you for the last bond that we issued, what the actual cost was of issuance. It wouldn't surprise me if you were, and that would have been for the $30 million for the Center for Public Safety, for Fire Station Two, and for Surgeon City. We'll bet you that you spent close to a million dollars or more on all of those costs.
What about let the time or done your bonds give you a little longer to pay back than going through a bank?
We typically don't go more than 20 years, and the banks, it just depends on what their appetite is, they might go 20. We, I have seen that.
Yeah, we try to stay away from 30 years because it's just a long time.
Yeah.
Or pay for it before it wears out.
Gail?
And this is just a picture of where our debt is over the next five years in the Water Sewer Fund. It's pretty steady, climbing ever so slightly, but...
When it comes to the departments, the non-departmental for public utilities is down. Do you remember, actually, I didn't make a note on that. You didn't have that down?
That's the debt service on the public services complex came up.
Okay.
That was paid off.
Good. And you can see, now, Public Works Utility Engineering, it's down, and would you like to explain why that is?
That's the million dollars we talk about each year. It gets, it's a PO that gets rolled over. Their original budget last year was about 1.4 million, but there's a PO out there for tank maintenance. We pay that on an annual basis, but we're obligated to pay the whole amount if we cancel the contract. So we keep it encumbered. We don't ever, yeah, we keep rolling it over. It's the same money every year. We don't spend it, but I felt like we were subject to have to pay that if we cancel the contract, and we just needed to keep that in front of everybody.
That's no longer true. Obviously, you dropped the million dollars off. Is that what you're saying there?
Well, no. What will happen is when we, when we close the year-end, that million dollars will roll over to the budget. Yes.
We continue that PO and that million dollars.
So it appears the budget went down a mill. Just wait until July 1st, and we'll be back up again. Water supply, very little change. Metering is a substantial change, and let's talk about that. As you'll recall, many years ago, we moved to a new meter system, which is called the ERT, E R T, Electronic Reading Technology, or whatever the T stands for. I mean, technology, is that what it stands for?
I don't know what it means. It's the antenna that we pick up the reading from, that's all I know.
ERT sounded good. The ERTs are now working out of their 10-year warranty. So we are now budgeting $120,000 every year for the next many years to replace those meters as needed. You know, with the technology changing, having those meters repaired is just simply not a good investment. What's happened over the 10-year warranty period is when one went out, we took it up, sent it in, they repaired it, no real cost to us, just time and labor. But now that they're coming out of warranty, we need to start replacing them. So you've added $120,000 a year. Will that actually be spent every year? Probably not, because we will be buying as we need, but we will keep a good supply because we don't want to have a meter go out and wait three months for one to come back in. But that's why that number has gone up substantially. The rest of it is simply general operating cost for that area. Gail, can you...
Meters, meters years ago lasted almost forever. What's the wear and tear on these new generation type meters?
These are actually electronic devices on the meter that we're talking about. They have, that's got the 10-year warranty on it. So, you know, we use meters, and attached to the meters are the electronic transmission devices that actually send the signals with the meter readings. So the meters and the devices, the ERTs, are two different items. They have different lives.
It's actually the battery goes dead, and we have to replace just the antenna piece. Battery is guaranteed for 10 years.
Batteries are guaranteed 10 years?
Pardon me?
No, I was thinking, the batteries are guaranteed 10 years.
The meter itself, I think, would continue to work. The only problem is you'd have to have to manual reading. And so this money is to replace the ERT's part of that, and in this case, they're all built together into one apparatus. And in the past, when they have failed, we've just been able to take one out, ship it back to the factory, they've replaced it, but the 10-year warranty is now up. Unfortunately, when they replace one, you don't get a new 10-year warranty unless we are paying for it, so...
I guess y'all have looked at the technology and to see if there's anything better that you can, you know, rather than continuing to invest in this one company, you're basically paying them a maintenance fee every year. You know, is there something else out there that y'all have looked at to see if you could do your own work? If you're just talking about replacing the battery, it should be, you know, sounds simple, but it may not be.
Well, one of the things, Jones Anzlo is going to an area read system. And we'll look at, for example, whether or not we could use a different device that would go to the area read system. But Jones Anzlo is just getting started on that. You know, right now, our ERTs are read by a meter reader driving through the neighborhood. But Jones Anzlo is going to this system where they have an umbrella, so to speak, and they can read the meters, you know, within that umbrella. And so we'll, before we get down the road of actually replacing the existing ERTs, we'll see whether or not that we might be able to piggyback with Jones Anzlo with their system.
And we've had some preliminary discussions about what would be the feasibility of buying the same type of equipment they're putting on their electrical meter and then paying them to do all the reading. So don't know any of that's going to work out, so the budget reflects the fact that we're going to continue. But our pledge to you is, we're going to be studying, not just automatically continue, but we are going to study, where do we go with new technology?
Is Anwasa using the same technology?
No, sir. I don't know that. We can ask, I don't know whether Jeff and Anwasa uses the ERT system or not.
Sabrina is shaking her head, yes.
They have, they have transitioned a lot over to the AMR or the electronic, it's the same that we do. I think they still do reads some manually, but I know that at least recently, their goal has been to get more to the automated rather than having a meter reader, you know, do manually.
Line maintenance, practically no change there, just minor adjustments. Wastewater is the same thing. And I would say to you, since William Brown took over at the Land App site, it is extremely well managed. We do hope that in the very near future, we're going to have another tour, and I think when you see the work that is being done out there now that maintains the forest, you're going to be very pleased. When it comes to the forest, we have been able to harvest a reasonable amount of timber this past year. I believe that the... Let me look at my other note. When it comes to timber, I think we're about $125,000 to the good this year of harvesting. Two years ago, we had such a wet year, we didn't do any burning, but the hurricane gave us a lot of assistance in taking the... And we've done a great job. The other thing, though, that we are hopeful is going to come through, Wally and William Brown and others have been working with NC State. And as you know, they have, NC State has conducted several studies out there about different plant types. They also did what we would call a permit analysis. That permit analysis was designed to look at the way we were operating and determine, could we change the permit so that we could actually put out more flow? You know, from previous meetings, we have discussed our limitation is not through, our limitation is the fact that we hold so much in the lagoons because we have to limit the amount that we spray. The study from NC State, which is being finalized, and we have already shared it once with the regulators at state level, would actually eliminate the clause about ponding. Now, why is that important? The current permit says that if it ponds at the sprayhead, you have to turn it off. Well, we have 21,000 sprayheads. At any one time, due to ponding, we can have anywhere from 1,000 to 3,000 sprayheads turned off. And if that sprayhead turns off, that means that there's that much more being stored in the lagoon. So Wally has been working with the NC State grad student, and they are showing that that limitation should be removed. And if that happens, it's going to have major positives on the amount of material we can move through a lagoon system. So probably in August or September, we'll be back with a workshop that will talk about that potential change in your permitting. Now, why is that important? Well, you've heard me say before that while in theory, you have a 9 million gallon plant, that because of the lagoon and the limitation on spraying, you don't have a 9 million gallon plant. Well, if we can change that permit limit, it could lift you back up maybe all the way to 9 million gallons. And why is that important? Because if you can't get rid of it, then you can't accept new. But if you can change that permit, but I would say to you, look forward to that study. NC State has done a very good job of assisting us, and that's, could be some major positive news for the growth of the community and how we provide sewer.
So we're saying that ponding by state regulations is bad, and it's prohibited. Somehow, we've coming up with a scheme that it's okay.
Because we've been able to prove percolation studies right there.
Okay.
And that percolation occurs much more rapidly than they were giving us credit for.
All right.
So hopefully, you know, all indications are right now that the state is going to modify our permit.
I'm just so happy you had the answer to that.
Well, I just made it up on the fly.
Sounds good to me.
Don't all sprinkler ads pond?
I think the answer there is, at least in my yard.
And yet, if you get an emergency situation, they let you do it anyway. You know, if you're close on the limits of the lagoon, they let you go ahead and spray all you need to. Pond, pond be darned. Just keep spraying until you get down below the level of lagoon, so...
The transfers. That was a good one, Mr. Bittner. Transfers.
That's just the cash funding of the capital projects that are in your CFP.
And overhead allocation?
That's where we allocate to the Water and Sewer Fund, the manager, the finance, HR, the attorney. Counsel.
Can't be much.
Looks like we're going to spend more time with them, huh?
Well, this coming year, because, again, spending time on several projects, yes. As you know, Solid Waste is set up as an enterprise fund. We're not recommending any changes in the fee schedule for commercial garbage. One of the options that I had suggested to you relative to balancing your $2 million issue has to do with increasing the $10 fee to $15. That's not something y'all have discussed, and we may not need to discuss it, but we can look at that in a week away, and at that point, y'all will be giving us, hopefully, a direction, yes to this recommendation, no to that recommendation. I know Mr. Bittner and I talked earlier. He expressed some concern about the increase in recreation fees. We're not actually discussing that now, even though I guess I just did discuss it now. But next week, y'all will be asked to decide, are you in favor of increasing those things that are recommended? I can certainly say to you that if you concur with Mr. Bittner on that $40,000, that certainly isn't going to break the bank on those recreation fees. You want to put in a commercial since I brought all that up?
You did well.
Are those recreation fees, they're mostly for non-city residents?
No, they'd be for everyone.
Okay.
You can see charges for services up just a little bit. One thing I can tell you is that when we made the decision to start leasing out our own dumpsters, that has been a very positive thing. Carrie can probably tell us right here. Carrie, how many dumpsters do we now lease?
We run 150 right now, and we generate about $4,200 a month in revenue.
And every three or four months, we come to Gail and beg for money to buy more dumpsters because I can tell you, there are many customers out there who like our dumpsters and our charge for those dumpsters. Borrowing is directly related to equipment. Last year, we bought a number of pieces. This year, we're buying two large rear loaders. The transfers, again?
That's the transfer in from General Fund to, for the residential disposal.
Because as you recall, the fee that we charge for $10 for residential does not cover the total cost of residential pickup. That is still subsidized by the tune of $1.6 million from the General Fund. And the appropriated fund balance in this area, we try to keep it low, especially given the fact that you do a subsidy from the General Fund for residential. You do not, knock on wood, you do not subsidize commercial in any way. As you see from the monthly payments, I'm sorry, from the monthly reports, we are in the black every month, except the one month that we had a large purchase. But that is sound, and we don't anticipate having to raise rates, certainly not for the coming year. And you can see the fund balance in the solid waste. Not much money there. We just try to keep it as close to zero as possible. Solid Waste Collection and Disposal. Remember, we do not dispose of it free. We pay the county a fee. We have asked the county, are they going to raise the disposal cost at the landfill? At this point, we have not received any information, yes or no. This budget is built around the assumption that they will not be raising that fee. If, however, they do raise that fee, then we're going to have to come back and adjust the budget. Because as you can appreciate, we send a lot of commercial and residential tonnage to the landfill. Commercial collection is simply amended based upon equipment and the overhead allocation, again.
What do the total fees run at the landfill?
The solid waste fee for disposal is $47 a ton plus the $2 that the state charges, so it's $49 per ton.
And we will look at the tonnage out of the annual report and get that to you. But it is a, if I remember correctly, it's a, like a half-million-dollar charge.
Are you talking about the total tons that we take to the landfill?
Yes, sir.
We take about anywhere from 30,000 to 34,000. We take about anywhere from 30,000 to 34,000 tons to the landfill. That includes, that does include some stuff that we take to Eastern Exeter because we don't take that yardage material to the landfill.
You're saying annually or what?
Annually, yes, sir.
And so I only missed it by a million dollars. Those numbers is like a million and a half dollars. But we've got the actual tonnage for this past year and the costs that we paid. Stormwater fund, we're not recommending an increase in the fee. I know many of you like to call that the rain tax.
But it is.
It is. Now, we actually tax you whether it rains or not. As you recall, it's based upon the amount of impervious surface that you have. The charges are covering very nicely. We have some borrowing that we'll be doing for equipment. You will also remember that it's not part of your budget financially, but it is part of your budget financially relative to the Oyster Highway. Normally, we do not spend any money outside of the city, but you gave authorization for us to manage the Oyster Highway on the basis that it was part of our permit for stormwater. So that gives us a justification. Pat and the folks are doing a good job. And we'll give you a report in the near future on when they're going to be actually starting to install some items. Appropriated fund balance is up, and that's because of capital projects. We have, you know, we have at least two major stormwater projects that we're facing this year. One is down at Sturgeon City. They're at the creek, where we're widening the road and basically building a bridge. The other is going to be over on Arnold. They're...
I know where it is, go ahead. I'm trying to think.
I was going to say, you look like, you know, the culvert that is there is failing, and we're going to have to replace that culvert. And that's going to be a pretty good sized project. And you'll see other minor projects in the CIP.
Do we have any financial obligation with the state on Western Boulevard and the improvement to the stormwater system down in Brickmore area? What street is that, Liberty or?
Liberty, yes. The answer is no. The answer also is, I don't believe that project will ever get built. They are in their third, Anthony, or fourth design?
I'm sorry to contradict, but they are acquiring right away right now for that project.
I still don't believe they're ever going to build. I've been here nine years, and that project's going to be built every year. And the last design that I saw was that they were going to try to jack and bore under all of those roads with a box culvert or pipe that was...
Four 60-inch culverts are going to be jacked and bored underneath the road.
Four.
Four.
And that's why I say, I don't believe it'll ever be built. When you have that much traffic that's there, and the project is going to take as long as it is, and you're now assuming in these soil conditions that you can jack and bore? I'm just glad my former engineering company wasn't the one that sealed this project.
Oh, ye of little faith.
It's happened before.
Just right Henderson.
They did it, they did it two years ago underneath Pine and Green and Marine Boulevard. So that was, that was two 54-inch pipes. We'll see if it happens. But to answer your question, sir, the only cost that we have associated is with utility relocation.
Once again, I hope that y'all enjoy that project. Let's see. Fund balance for the stormwater, you can see, and again, we're trying to save there so we don't go back into debt. The Parkwood project was a major project. You had to use debt for that. When does Parkwood come on? We'll find that out for you.
I think there's maybe two more years.
It's helped a great deal.
Oh, that has been a successful project. There's no question about that. But our goal is to try to eliminate as much borrowing as possibly can. Because, you know, once you get into 10 years' worth of debt, where's your next project? Rather pay for it as we can, pay for it as we go.
That's telling you where they are based on debt right there.
Here are the stormwater budgets. You can see, and let's talk again, the transfers, Gail?
Those are the three projects, the Wardola, Leonard Street, and then the remediation over by Jack Emmett, the Cloud Irwin School.
You're going to see in your CIP, and I know you've already noticed it, we are looking at a major expense in replacing the pipe that is next to Cloud Irwin. It is 21 feet deep. And it is just within a stone's throw of the side of one of their buildings. So we're talking about having to bring in a large-scale contractor with a lot of expense. And we'll be discussing, but that is a pipe that carries the stormwater from, what I'll say, the upper side of Cloud Irwin, down past the splash pad, and then out. And that pipe has failed. So it's not a project you're going to be able to delay. But that will be one of your major CIP projects out of the stormwater this coming year.
It has to be 21 feet deep or...
The current one is 21 feet deep. You know, we are going to be looking at options and figuring out what can we do because that's going to be a very difficult dig. Transit operations, these reflect the new fee schedules that you have approved. Anthony, when does the new fee go into Fairbanks?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
May 1st.
May 1st. And obviously, this reflects the grants and the other items. You've seen a lot of this before. How about if we take a 10-minute break and pick it back up at this point, if that's acceptable? On the Tourism Development Authority, you can see the budget is up slightly. We are having a number of excellent months relative to collecting the occupancy tax. Obviously, this year, we had a positive because of the hurricane. We certainly hope that in the future, its occupancy is not tied to natural disasters, but rather to tourism. Fleet maintenance, it is one of our internal service funds. This is a function, basically, charges out to all of the other funds. So water and sewer pays their part, sanitation, general fund, and so forth. You can see that Ed has held the line here. I would remind you that one of the decision packages is to make a part-time employee a full-time employee, and we'll be discussing that again most likely next week. I can certainly say to you that, you know, if you look at what Alan Baker does with everything with the buildings and what Ed does with the equipment, if you're going to add employees, those are the... You're currently building the bathrooms at Jack M Yet. If you look at Georgetown, you rebuilt that entire park over there using CDVG money. You're currently building sidewalks that will lead through the Georgetown community that will increase the safety over there. And Lily has also agreed that she will help fund through community development the new bathrooms at Georgetown. Probably within the next two months, we'll be getting the bids out for that set of bathrooms. So you'll have new bathrooms at Bluton Park, at Northeast Creek, at Jack M Yet, and of course, at Jacksonville Landing, and then potentially new bathrooms at Georgetown. So community development doesn't just help a specific person, it helps the entire community. And I will put a plug in again. If you want to go to a phenomenal park with your children and grandchildren, go to Georgetown. It rivals the commons as far as playground equipment and just the maintenance that Michael's people do. The only negative at Georgetown Park right now are the bathrooms, and we're going to be addressing those shortly.
Let's have a kudo moment. There was an article in the Daily News, maybe a week or so, maybe you caught it, maybe you didn't, about people moving into a CD-developed home. And part of that article mentioned about non-payment assistance made it possible and mortgage assistance, uh, low in, low-interest loans. And a part of that story was that we've only had one default on a loan in the history of the program. That is amazing, and it's also the kudo moment for CD administration and for the entire city administration. And you need to, need to have it right.
Tracy Jackson.
With what she's been able to accomplish with a limited amount of funds and the decrease in the amount of funds that we've had over the years, it's incredible.
Well, we, we have been very blessed, and Tracy Jackson is leading the effort to try to qualify more homeowners. We currently have, really, what would you say, about nine lots that are available? What, how, how many do we have?
I would say about 19. I apologize if I have an exact count, but we have purchased and acquired several throughout the city, downtown Anne Street and over in our, um, Constance Avenue area. And those are actually on display in our lobby for anyone that's interested, um, to make those lots available to build your custom apartment.
We currently are working to qualify a person who has picked a lot on Newbury Street. And I think that statement alone, Mayor, you can remember in your tour as a police officer, I don't think you would have wanted to live on Newbury Street, would you?
It was kind of rough down there, one time.
But today, for a homeowner to voluntarily say, of all your lots, that's the one I want to live on, that tells you how successful your redevelopment program has been. And Lily and the staff, and of course, the mayor and council support, has made a very big difference in it.
Related to that, we discussed sometime about some of those properties CD had because the proposed new flood regulations weren't feasible. Has that flood map finally been finalized, or is it still under appeal?
It's still under appeal. Uh, the one thing that we can, I think, document very clearly is the proposed 10-foot elevation, which would have taken us from four feet up to 10 feet. Hurricane Florence didn't do a lot of good things for us, but one of the good things it did do is document flood levels. So we think that we're going to be able to use the data on the, uh, on the water gauges that were on the bridges to show that a more accurate number is in the seven-foot area. Now, that doesn't change the fact that the lots that CD bought several years ago at one-foot elevation aren't going to be billable. And those, as you know, through prior approval, we are gradually moving the ownership from CD over to Stormwater. And I think we were doing three lots a year.
There are three lots in the budget for 19, and there's three more included in the 520 budget.
And what, what's our long-term plans for those lots, since they're, you know, are we going to have to maintain them from a grass standpoint, or are we going to allow them to?
That we're going to leave them in their natural state.
And allow them to whatever they progress up and, and just be part of the?
Part of Mother Nature.
Part of Mother Nature. Okay.
Yeah, one-foot elevation, uh, and if, you know, if you go by, uh, and I will also say, if you haven't been by Sturgeon City lately, you need to go by the parking lot. Everything is paved and striped. Glenn will tell you that they are looking at an opening, I believe sometime in June, when they have the Sturgeon City Institute. But the building is coming along nicely. But when you're down by the Sturgeon City Park, if you look at all the wooded area there, uh, that's the part that is being transferred over to Stormwater. And like you said, it's being transferred over because those lots are simply not billable. And we do not, and we do not intend to do anything except let the weeds grow and the trees and percolation in.
Actually, this budget's going to go down by 12,000. It, it does not reflect the lower amount in the grant.
Okay. So the grant number of 365 that's shown here is, is going to go down by $12,000?
$12,680.
City Hall maintenance is up. Alan Baker, we have, what, 11 air conditioners for this building?
17.
Well, that's close to 11. We have a lot. And they're all, they're all aging out. So when we looked at the budget this year, we're really beginning a multi-year cycle to replace every one of the air conditioners, and they're not inexpensive. How many will you replace in the coming year?
Six.
Six?
Six a year, whatever it is.
So for the next three years, you can anticipate seeing about this much money just to replace the air conditioners. Information technology, charges for services, this is a service fund, so once again, they, depending on how many pieces of apparatus you have, that's what you get charged for. Debt proceed, I will mention to you again that one of our challenges, probably three years out, is going to be a major purchase to replace the backbone of, of our system. It's simply aging out. Adam has joined us. Adam, the, my recollection from what Chris told us before he left is that we've been notified that the maintenance contracts are going to be expiring, and the maintenance are not going to be there. And we're looking at three to five million dollars, is still your estimate?
Correct.
So we're going to have to be planning on, on how we're going to do that.
Excuse me, are we still using the services with the city of Cary to back up our information?
Yes, well, and we're going further than that. Now, we're actually setting up a site that we can operate, our city system, from Cary and just connect through the network. So it's like a, our own cloud.
It will not be a backup system. Council asked us to establish that, and we have. But we're actually talking about the cause of Hurricane Florence, that if we suffered catastrophic to our own buildings, how would we truly operate? So we're setting up literally an operating site at Cary. Media services, I will remind you that the county and Onwasa both pay for our assistance. The county pays $75,000, Onwasa now pays $2,500. As two members know, you're now on an every-other-month meeting basis, so the revenue from Onwasa has come down. Appropriate fund balance is the fund balance from their own fund, not from the general fund. As you can see overall, this, like, like the other budgets, has stayed relatively flat. Health benefits, you have heard the stories on that. This does reflect the anticipated rate increase that will go into effect in July. And you can see the contribution levels from the city, from the employee, from the retiree, and it's just not a very pretty picture. It's just the cost. We don't know, because we have not gone through open enrollment, how many people will be changing the plan. So these numbers may in fact change even after you adopt the final budget. Why? Because contributions and so forth are directly related to which plan you pick. We're having open enrollment the 9th and 10th of May, and I believe it's the 14th and 15th. I don't hold any to those dates. But all employees have been notified of the change and have been told that they will automatically be enrolled in the same plan that they were in this year unless they attend a meeting and fill out the form. So. What we would like to do on the 7th is have a public hearing in this room at 6 o'clock. We would like to start May the 7th at 5 o'clock in this room, going through some of the decision packages. What you have seen so far is literally every part of the budget that's in the base budget. What is left is for you to decide on the decision packages, department issues, DI's, as we call them. Also, we're asking you to look at the $992,000 proposal by the manager as to how you possibly could address the $2 million shortfall. We will also be reviewing with you the rate schedule. There are modest rate schedule changes in there. And then we will be asking you to give us any direction you want to relative to a potential pay plan change for fire, and if you're ready to discuss the issue of general compensation for the employee. I would mention to you again that your capital improvement program will also be reviewed. So we hope that what we'll do is get a good hour in and have the public hearing and be able to stay at least another hour to cover all those other items. Does that sound like a reasonable target for you?
Thanks, Mr. President.
So the budget hearing will be during the regular workshop?
Yes, sir.
It's been advertised. Carmen, you and John explain how we're doing that.
The mayor will recess the workshop meeting and actually go into the public hearing and just like you would in the regular things and see more and more speak and etc.
Well, we'll be doing that in this room.
No, we're moving rooms.
Now, if you would like for us to encourage the public to come, we can announce that most likely you're looking at a tax increase. On the other hand, we felt that since you have strongly said to us you do not support a tax increase, we assume that there's really no need to move into the council chambers. If I've misread your direction on tax increase, now's a good time to tell us. Seeing no takers on that. We would like to?
But we need to get the word out, so we make sure that people know that in this environment that they could still come and speak, because this is unusual. We usually have it in the?
It's been advertised.
It's not going to make any difference.
Well, no, but Jerry, I think people should know that we have it, that we have it, and they can come here.
We, we will do that. We will do that. And if you would feel more comfortable, I guess, did the advertisement actually say in here?
Yes.
So you can't move it over there? I suppose you could.
Depends on the climate, sure as I've been, we clearly can move it over there, we need to.
I'll let the city attorney give you advice on that and any other good matters, so. Those are all the items we had, other than the one city moment, and I'd like to share what I think is just an amazing, you know, remember the Vietnam veterans? It's hard to believe that the Vietnam War ended today in 1975.
Wow.
I mean, so many of us have lived through that war. We know what it did, we know what it has done. We know the patriotism that was given by so many. This community obviously has its own memorial to the Vietnam veterans, and we continue to support them, as we do all veterans. For the public, one of the things that I find wonderful about the Vietnam Memorial is the fact that on our memorial, the persons who sacrificed are listed alphabetically. The memorial in Washington is chronological. So when I look for Bobby Cruz?
Easy to find.
Pretty easy to find. Service to other single Marine programs. A lot of wonderful things happen in this community because of the Marines who are retired, as well as those who continue to serve. Here are a group of new Marines out doing their community service. And what's amazing is they don't come and say, I think I'd like to go over and pick weeds over here. What they do is they call, like they did to Michael Laquory this past week, I have 50 young Marines who need X number of hours, please find projects for them. So we're in the process right now of trying to find projects for them. Michael told me today that he feels pretty comfortable that he can find projects for 20 of them, so that every Friday afternoon or morning, they can come in and work with us. Now, we're not going to put them on lawnmowers and weed eaters, because that's not the type thing that, but when it comes to a lot of other things, the community continues to benefit from the work of single Marines. Let's talk about a thank you letter. Let me see, let me find the letter. This is the, the actual letter, and it has to do with a lady who stopped by the fire department relative to her child seats. And if you look, it says, the two, when it says these two, they're talking about two firefighters. Were great with my children, showing them the fire truck, as well as letting me take pictures of them on it. My four-year-old was beyond thrilled. Why do we worry about safety seats? Well, they were there earlier in April, and on April the 14th, her mother and her son, who's four years old, were driving home, and they were involved in an accident where a person, they were sitting at the red light, and as you see, they were hit by a drunk driver. Now, the mother, or the grandmother in this case, this is the vehicle, the grandmother in this case sustained, sustained substantial injuries. But the four-year-old was not harmed at all, because he was in a child safety seat that had been properly installed, and the firefighters had given the mother and the grandmother correct instructions on how to strap the child in. So, you know, when you think of the fire department?